Okay, we're gonna get this meeting started. Welcome to the Montclair City Council meeting. This is your first time here. And as we normally begin, we'll begin with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm gonna ask that the city clerk to announce both individuals.
The invocation will be given by Pastor Donald Record of Christian Development Center, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Rue.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Well, Father, as always, we seek your counsel and your insight for these men and women of this council. And we pray that you would make the impartation that's necessary so that they can make the right decision regarding this city and its citizenship. We also ask that you would watch over their family and bless them, and that you would perfect those things that concern them, Lord God, so that they can be about your business. And last but not least, we ask also that, Lord God, that you would guide them. You are promised in your word that if we acknowledge you in all of our ways, you will direct our path. Well, we are depending on that for you to do that through them and to work through them, Lord God, of your good pleasure, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
We salute the flag of our nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic which stands. One nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we will now have roll call, please.
Councilmember Lopez.
I'm here.
Councilmember Martinez. Councilmember Rue.
President.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
I'm here.
Mayor Dutre.
I'm here. Okay, the next item is presentations. I believe we're doing presentations this evening, and we're gonna recognize human resources, new human resources department employees. And it looks like Marcia's on vacation today. Marcia's out today, at least. So if you don't mind, will join me here in the bottom, and we'll recognize your new employee.
Good evening, City Council, city staff, and members of the public. It is my pleasure, I'm very excited, to introduce our new senior citizen supervisor, Shari Haynes. Shari comes to Montclair with over a decade of experience in the human services field. Originally from the San Francisco Bay Area, she pursued her education at Cal State University San Bernardino, majoring in psychology. Prior to the city of Montclair, Shari worked with various cities, including San Bernardino, Rialto, Redlands, and the Harupa Community Services District. Shari has experience with individuals of all ages, including seniors. Specifically, she helped to oversee two senior centers in the city of Redlands. She's collaborated with numerous organizations in San Bernardino County and has helped to oversee various grants, special events, and programs. Outside of work, Shari's interests include traveling out of the country, antique and thrift shopping, sci-fi movies, and everything Disney-related. With her wealth of experience and commitment to the senior community, we're very excited to welcome Shari to the Human Services Department team.
Welcome aboard, guys. Welcome aboard. Quick, you know, I'm a Cal State University alumni. Go Coyotes, right? And I also used to work for the city of Rialto. Until 2019, I was in the city of Rialto. But welcome to Montclair. Montclair's a little better than Rialto, I think. I won't say why. All right, well, we're delighted to have you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
And then I see you have your welcome club here, and welcome aboard as well. And if you wanna stay, you're welcome to stay. If you wanna leave, this is a good time to leave. So, but, so, next item is public comment. Before I get to the public comment, I'm gonna take an item off the consent calendar, and I think this is a good time to take action or consider this item. This item is B9, to consider ratifying the City of Montclair policy statement regarding the discontinuation of oral public comments for remote public participation during public meetings. And I suspect we have some people who are on Zoom. I suspect that we have people on Zoom and may wanna speak. So, I have a statement here. At the March 4, 2024 meeting of this City Council during a public comment session of agenda, unfortunately, several individuals participated via Zoom, which is the city's online video conferencing platform. When they provided the opportunity to speak, approximately 10 participants proceeded to make anti-Semitic, racist, homophobic, and other hate-filled comments. And again, I wanna say that was very unfortunate. As the City Council and I did at the March 4 meeting, we condemned at that time, and we again condemned the hate comments made, and we also reaffirmed the City Council's Resolution Number 23-3414 condemning such hate behavioral. In order to avoid a repeat of the March 4, 2024 incident of hate crime, hate speech, excuse me, at future public meetings that feature a virtual session component, the City Council directed the city manager to develop an appropriate policy for ratification by the City Council. As specified in the staff report, at tonight's meeting, the city manager adopted a policy statement requiring City Council ratification as follows. Except as otherwise authorized by the city manager, effective immediately, and subject to consideration by the Montclair City Council, the City of Montclair should discontinue accepting oral public comments via video teleconference application or performing or platform, including, but not limited to Zoom, WebEx, or Skype, telephonic devices, or any other web-based media, application, or platform during meetings open to the public, including but not limited to meetings of this Montclair City Council, the Montclair Planning Commission, the Montclair Community Activists Commission, the subcommittees of the Montclair City Council. The City of Montclair should continue to accept other forms of public comment in compliance with the Ralph M. Brown Act and procedures of decorum as established by the Montclair Municipal Code and/or as adopted by this Montclair City Council. For the purpose of this policy, other forms of public comments shall include the submission of written comments to the city clerk in advance of public meetings subject to the policy, and one call on pursuit to procedures established by the City Council, verbal comments made by members of the audience physically in attendance at a meeting of the Montclair City Council and the city's commissions and committees. This policy may be amended or otherwise modified by the Montclair City Manager, subject to ratification by the Montclair City Council. This policy shall not prohibit the use of video teleconferencing for the purpose of receiving public testimonies, presentations, or conducting the business of the city as deemed necessary and appropriate by the city manager. So, the policy I just stated is in the staff report written by the city manager. Again, I wanna personally condemn what took place at the last City Council meeting. The hate speech was unacceptable. It's unacceptable not just in these council chambers, but unacceptable here in the city of Montclair. So, I'm gonna ask at this time, if we have any public comments regarding this item, please, this is the time for public comments. I think we have one member of the audience want to speak?
Yes. So, that would be Dr. Sharon Lindstein.
And you will have five minutes. Hello.
Hi, City Councilwomen and Gentlemen, and City Clerks. My name is Dr. Sharon Lindstein. I'm not a medical doctor, so if there's an emergency, please call 911. I'm an educator. I wanna thank the City Council for making those statements just now. Thank you, Mayor. It's unconscionable. I don't even, I can't even give it any credit. I don't wanna give it any credit, but it was unconscionable. I'm Jewish, and to hear those things was so hurtful. Unconscionable is the only word that comes to mind. So, I thank you for your statement just now, for being civil and giving credence to civility. Thank you. Thank you.
At this time, we have any other comments on this item only?
I have no more cards for the council chamber.
And again, I wanna apologize to the audience that's on Zoom and that will not be able to make public comments. I just wanna assure you that the Zoom portion will continue on, so you will be able to hear the Zoom meeting live. Am I correct, Ms. Starr? So, you'll be able to hear this meeting live, you just won't be able to make public comments. So, if you wanna make public comments, you either have to be here physically inside the council chambers, or you can submit written comments to the city clerk prior to whatever deadline she has for those written comments, usually before 5:00 PM on the day of the council meeting, if I'm correct. That works. So, I'm gonna ask my council colleagues, they have any comments they'd like to make at this time? Any members? And it will be a motion for approval once we're done on this item. So, who wants to lead off? Councilmember Rue's the first.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I concur with what you've said. I grew up in a home where my parents taught me that we are all God's children, deserving of respect, dignity, and equality. I learned early on about some of the issues in hate. One of my, I had two uncles at Normandy, and I heard their stories and why they were liberating Europe because of all the anti-Semitic and anti-Romani, anti-everything that went on. I didn't grow up in a home where we understood what that hate was because we're all God's children. I find it unacceptable in a civil society. We can all have our opinions. We're welcome to those opinions. But when those opinions begin to breach into somebody else's right to survive, right to live, it's wrong. And so, I concur with what you've said, Mr. Mayor, and we have a very strong anti-hate resolution that we've adopted in this city. I think it serves us well, although I could've summed it up in very few words, and it's common to three major denominations, three major religions in the world, thou shalt not hate. And I'm summarizing it there, but that's how I feel about it, and it's upsetting. And I know this community is much better than that. I've grown up in this community, and I've spent my entire life in this town, and I know we are better than that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanna reassure, at the last meeting, we had a group of citizens here that were advocating a resolution for the Gaza conflict, and obviously, there was another group of residents here who were not in support of that resolution from the Jewish community. And I wanna reassure that the group that spoke on Zoom were unrelated to the group here that was in support of the Gaza resolution. And I reassure them that they were not being included or mixed with that Zoom crowd. That Zoom crowd had nothing to do with Gaza, what was going on in Gaza. They were just pure, pure hate. And I'll just leave it there. So, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really do want to thank City Manager Starr and you, Mayor Dutre, for making this change. I do believe, like we all do, that people have the right to speak to their elected officials, and we absolutely want them to do so. But it has to be about the business of the city and not about the racial slurs and expletives that we heard last week. So, I'm hoping that, you know, at some point, people will, if they really wanna talk to us, just come in or give something to the city clerk. It's much easier to say some hateful thing when you're in anonymous face and nobody knows who you are than it is to say those things when you're looking in their face. So, if people have things that they wanna talk to us about, absolutely, yes, come into the chambers and talk to us, or give the information to the city clerk. But even in that, the speech should not include expletives and/or racial slurs. That's not what we're about in this city. That concludes my comments.
Okay, Councilmember Lopez.
Just by way of background, because the anti-hate resolution was mentioned multiple times at the past two council meetings, and now this one. By way of background, the, how we came about that adoption of the resolution, there was a request and a letter sent to us as council members, and I picked it up in my mail, and it stood out to me. The Jewish Federation of Greater Los Angeles and their executive director, Jason Moss, embarked on a campaign to get as many cities throughout Southern California or within the jurisdiction of the Jewish Federation, which is a large number of cities, to adopt an anti-hate resolution that would encompass antisemitism. But per their request, they didn't stop there. They wanted all forms of hate to be included with that. And the irony is now, we had a night in which we were having some, although tense and passionate discussion, over a foreign conflict. We had some individuals, as my colleague Ms. Johnson just alluded to, that can use the phone or computer to hide behind anonymity and make some pretty outlandish and uncalled-for statements. The irony is that you had a Jewish organization who got the ball rolling on this issue, and we adopted a resolution at their request. And these individuals that are instigators of hate are basically taking advantage of a freedom and a venue and running amok with it. So, I'm glad that my colleagues and I voted for that anti-hate resolution that encompasses all ethnic groups, all federally and state-protected entities. But clearly, clearly, based upon the meeting two weeks ago, there is still a lot more work to be done because we can't, I guess we can't cure ignorance, and we can't cure stupidity. And I guess there will always be some folks that will always hate no matter what. And the only consolation I have is that one day, they will face God and be accountable for their views and their words. And so, I pity on them. But anyhow, with respect to the policy, I would hope that in the future, when tensions cool, perhaps we can go back to allowing Zoom and telephonic participation. But for now, we're just gonna go back to the era in which we allowed public comment, and that was before COVID even was thought of, where folks attend a meeting and they come to the podium. And I think that's a good practice for now. So, thank you, staff, and Mr. Mayor, for bringing this forward.
Yeah, and I just wanna say the resolution also was a response to other hate crime and comments that was going on in other parts of the country towards other ethnic groups. Councilmember Martinez.
Is this going to prevent legislator updates via Zoom as well? Is this all, every comment over Zoom?
Well, I think that would be up to the City Council, how they wanna go forward in relation to that. My recommendation is that when it comes to legislative representatives from the various legislators, if they wanna continue to participate online, then we would put them under the presentation section of the agenda. They would have to make it known to us that they intend to make some comments, so it would no longer be under the public comment section. It would be under presentations. We would identify and list it. They would be allowed to make presentations online, but the public comment section would continue to remain blanked out as far as online participation, except for written comments submitted or in-person comments.
I'm gonna recommend that, because I know that Supervisor Hagman's office has been providing information almost every meeting. I'm gonna recommend that under presentations in the future, we just have a presentation from the city manager, and then gives you prerogative if there's legislators or somebody else wants to give us information, we did on that portion of the calendar. They don't have to call you in advance, or at least, well, they call you in advance, but it's already on the agenda. So, do you understand what I'm talking about, Ed?
I think Andrea understands.
Or Andrea, yeah. Just, we'll just say, under presentations, we'll call it presentation by the city manager. The city manager has prerogative to allow appropriate persons to provide the City Council information of importance to the City Council.
And I have the same question, because it's my understanding that this is going to, excuse me, this is going to pertain to committee assignments as well. Let's say there's a scenario where one of us needs to attend via Zoom. Are we going to be able to participate over Zoom? Or, you know, if we have situations where other employees want to attend our council meetings and they wish to speak, will they be able to do so? Is that discriminating in some way?
Well, absolutely, we will allow that level of participation. So, we're going to continue the Zoom meetings. And the reason why we're gonna continue the Zoom meetings is so that we can have that flexibility. So, for example, when there is a presentation that is to be made to the City Council by a consultant, but it will not be an in-person meeting, they will be able to participate online via Zoom and make their presentation. Same thing for an employee of the City of Montclair, if they're not in attendance at the meeting, but they are listed as a person in the Zoom waiting room, then I, as the city manager, would be able to call on them, for example, if I have a question that I want them to respond to. So, or if I need them to make a presentation to the City Council, then they will be allowed to do that via Zoom. Again, the emphasis here is that for the public comment section, we will no longer allow people in the waiting room to participate. In other words, we will not unmute their microphone for them to speak, and they will not be able to share any documents or presentations that may have via that, via online. They would have to be in-person in the council chambers to do that.
Okay, and final question. I thought I saw Bruce Culp's hand raised earlier, and since he's probably going to be affected by this quite a bit, I was wondering, did he, did he lower his hand, or did he have an opportunity to speak tonight?
No, fortunately, he won't be able to speak tonight because this policy's currently in effect for tonight's meeting, and if we ratify it, it will remain in effect for future meetings as well. I know the city did, staff, they put out a notification to the community on social media, informed the community of this. I believe Bruce Culp is aware of that as well, and I also reached out to Bruce Culp, and if you wanted to talk to me about it, I gave him that opportunity to do so.
Okay.
As far as council members, I believe, if a council member wants to participate virtually or remotely, they just have to follow the Brown procedures, which is, they have to indicate their meeting location on the agenda, and then they're able to participate either by phone or by, or by Zoom for a council member.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I would move adoption of consent calendar item B9, which is the City of Montclair policy statement regarding the discontinuation of oral public comments from remote public participants during public meetings.
I will second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Lopez, seconded by Councilmember Rue. Okay, that's adopted 5-0. And again, I apologize to the public that's on Zoom, that, which to public, which to comment through Zoom. Okay, now, we'll go down to public.
Ms. Mayor, if I may, this is the, excuse me, what the City of Clermont did as well.
City of Clermont also suspended their Zoom comments as well, yes. Were we kind of following them? Same group that bombed our meeting, did the same thing to City Clermont about three months ago. Okay, so now, we're on public comment. This is an opportunity, members of the public, that wish to speak to the City Council on any items not on the agenda, or any items that are on their consent calendar. You'll have five minutes. If you wish to speak, you'll fill out a speaking card, and you'll submit that to the city clerk. And I'll ask the city clerk if you have any speakers this time.
Yes, our first speaker is Dr. Sharon Lindstein.
Thank you, hello again. Hello, Mayor Dutre, City Council members, and city clerk. Again, I'm Dr. Sharon Stein. I have it written out so I can be very succinct, okay? I'm writing to you today to urge you not to adopt any biased ceasefire resolution that would fuel divisions and hate in our community while harming efforts to end the horrific October 7 war. I want an end to the fighting and suffering in Gaza as well, and I'm sure you do too. However, biased ceasefire City Council resolutions have been shown to have no impact on this complex conflict, and I wish that the individuals who are calling for ceasefire could acknowledge that. In fact, what the Jewish community has witnessed, that this resolutions like this can fuel more hatred toward the Jewish community, and I have seen it, and I have experienced it. And anyone else that does not believe cities should weigh in on international issues, look no further than the unconscionable and inhumane comments made on, again, made March 4th, the hate speech and the resolution that exacerbate, encourage, and create dark racial divisions within the community. There are many examples of such hate, including Oakland and City Long Beach. I feel it's important to remind you of the following. A ceasefire existed on October 6th, and it was broken by Hamas on October 7th, when they brutally, barbarically, and unconscionably attacked Israel, killing 1,200 innocent civilians and kidnapping 253 people ranging from nine months to 85 years old, and some babies were burned in their cribs. Israel has accepted terms laid out in international negotiations for extended ceasefire and drastic increase in humanitarian aid to Gaza. It is Hamas that has thus far rejected a ceasefire to this day and to this very minute. There would be a permanent ceasefire tomorrow if Hamas would release all the hostages, lay down their arms, and allow Israelis and Palestinians to build peace and security. The type of ceasefire I am sure that you're being pressured to support would not bring a just or lasting peace. What it would do is it would help Hamas, a genocidal terrorist group, maintain its grip on power in Gaza and continue its endless war against Israel. While I do not believe that municipal governments should address international affairs, if you choose to adopt a resolution, it must include a call for Hamas to release all hostages, lay down their arms. Golda Meir said, "When Palestinians learn to love their children more than they hit Israelis, then there'll be peace." I know that the City of Montclair wants to do the right thing and bring about an end to this humanitarian crisis, but this symbolic gesture will do nothing more than hate and animosity toward the Jewish community. Again, I personally observed a Jewish female rabbi being verbally harassed at a local farmer's market. Children, Jewish children, are being called out and harassed in their schools. Antisemitism has increased 400% whereabouts the pro ceasefire and anti-BDS boycott, divest sanction groups have intimidated city councils in many areas. I personally want to thank Mayor John Dutre, I hope I pronounced your name right, and Councilwoman Denise Johnson, I hope that I pronounced your name right, for not seconding second requests now for ceasefire resolutions and not caving in. Cities such as Montclair should not get involved in social and political issues other than the business of the lovely city of Montclair, which I shop in a lot. I just wanna let you know, being ethical is having the right thing, being ethical is having the right to do something, but doing the right thing. I also wanna thank Ben Lopez for his support and love of Israel, and those who bless Israel will themselves be blessed. I urge you to not adopt a resolution and use your energy to bring people together rather than further dividing them and not making our communities divisive. And please, do not allow a pro ceasefire group to intimidate you. Hamas's leader, his name is Sinwar, backwards as war is sin, okay, is the only entity that can call for a ceasefire. Anything else is ludicrous and made up. I have one more thing to say. For anybody that uses the quote, "from the river to the sea," that is the true genocide that the other side is wishing for Israel. That is the true genocide. And I just wanna thank you so much for listening to me today. I got it all in. I tried to write it down so I could be succinct and get it all in. Again, I thank you so much, too, for the B9 resolution that you just voted on. Hate speeches should not be acceptable, and thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Right, our next speaker is Bill Kaufman.
Mayor, City Council, I'm so glad I wasn't here at our last meeting. I missed very few. And for you to be subjected to that type of dialogue from, obviously, I can idiots, you know, and I think making the steps to make sure they can't have their voice heard like that again is very prudent. That being said, I'm here, obviously, on the, on the legal cannabis. We still have our location tied down above Shoe City on Central Avenue. We're moving forward with Clermont on our location, and also Laguna Woods. What we're putting in there is a wellness center. And I know that you, I've been here for, I don't know, maybe two years. I don't know how long, but a long time. And I was led to understand that we would have an ordinance for your review in the first quarter of this year, and I'm not sure where that is. We're going to talk to Mr. Cousins, I think, tomorrow to see where that is. But things are moving forward pretty easily, and there's, we're getting very little negative But things are moving forward pretty easily, and there's, we're getting very little negative response right now. I think that, that the cannabis sort of industry is now being looked at rather than some sort of derelict head shops is something that every city should have and have for their constituents, that they would have a legal facility to go to and secure if they choose not only cannabis products, but many herbal products that have been deemed to be very effective in the medicinal world. So, that all being said, I was going to make a comment on the so-called war in Gaza, but, and I was in a war. And a war is when you have two sides shooting at each other of equal strength. I know that what happened to Israel is, was, is horrible, and to the citizens of Israel are horrible, but to consider, continue what I consider a genocide of women and children starving, being killed, 40,000 now. I don't know what the, I don't know what the, the proof is there. I mean, what are they trying to do? You're going to kill out most of the Palestinians or starve them? So, I'm, you know, I am absolutely for an immediate ceasefire, okay, and move in, and Israel has every right to defend itself and has every right for retribution, but I don't believe they have the right to do what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Stephen Chow.
Good evening, good evening, council members, Mayor Protim and mayor. My name is Stephen Chow, and I'm the Government Affairs and Expansion Manager for Stezzi. Stezzi is the largest vertically integrated cannabis company in the state and was founded by James Kim, an Iraq War veteran who experienced PTSD upon returning from his tour of duty. He found that his fellow veterans experienced ailments related to their service in Iraq and created the Stezzi Cannabis Vaporizer so that patients can safely and reliably dose on cannabis while reducing their reliance on opioids. Since then, Stezzi has grown to become a vertically integrated company, which means that we cultivate our own flour, we manufacture them into edibles, vaporizers, and we also sell them at our Stezzi branded retail stores. Being vertically integrated allows us to keep our costs down so that we can compete against the illicit market that sells untested and unsafe products and also offers zero tax benefits to cities. Our products are also sold in 90% of legal retailers across the state. We have a, we at Stezzi have a retail footprint of 33 stores across California, which are all unionized, setting the standard for workers' rights and how a cannabis retail store should operate. The closest store to Montclair is our Pomona location. After two years of being open in Pomona, we have donated over half a million dollars to the City of Pomona to improve parks and schools within a half mile radius to our store. I urge the city council to consider an ordinance to allow legal cannabis retail storefronts in the City of Montclair. Legal cannabis has the power to transform communities with the tax revenue that they provide, as seen in Pomona. But there has also been a lot of testimonials from patients using cannabis to help with the medical conditions, whether it is pain management, or helping chemotherapy patients get an appetite, or helping victims of trauma cope with their PTSD. I would also kindly urge the council to consider a zoning ordinance to allow cannabis retail stores to integrate into the commercial corridors of the city. We have seen with many of our stores that when properly located, it provides great synergy to the retail businesses around our locations with the increase in foot traffic. I'm happy to answer any questions and be a resource should the city council or the city staff have any questions. Thank you for your time.
Okay, our next speaker is Olivia Ramirez?
Renteria.
Oh, Renteria, sorry.
Hello. City members, council members, I'm a little nervous, I don't usually talk in public, but I'm here on behalf of my daughter. She uses a skate park here in Montclair every Saturday morning and Sunday. We arrange our time to come here in the morning because in the late afternoon, there's a lot of riffraff, and as you know, there's been a lot of, a lot of vandalism going on there in this park. I want to talk to the council members today to, to maybe come up with a different park hours for the skate park, so that way vandalism will decrease because we noticed it's the later kids that go to the park, late, later in the evening. Several gentlemen and kids go skating in the morning, and those are usually the people that are showing up with gloves and trash bags and leaf blowers, and they're cleaning up all the vandalism that happened the previous night. So I would like to ask the council members to reconsider the park hours or have different park closure hours for the consequences of vandalism. Because on several occasions, I brought my daughter here, and she was very upset, and I had to take her back home. Because there are different parks in the area, however, she is not at the skill level of Chino Skate Park or Upland Skate Park, and Montclair Skate Park is boring to her. She loves Montclair Skate Park, so.
That's good.
That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Sorry about the vandalism, but maybe, I don't know, maybe our city manager can give us a little report and tell us what's going on over there and see if that requires any changes there. City Manager Star.
Well, the City of Montclair is very active in addressing any vandalism that occurs in the park. In fact, I would just say, a couple of weeks ago, somebody tagged the wall, and we immediately did what we always do, and we shut it down for several days as a message to the users of the skate park that we simply do not tolerate any form of vandalism at the park. There's, you know, it's concrete for the most part, and so there isn't a lot for them to damage other than graffiti, but we are on top of it right of way. Now, of course, leaves and, and other debris that is left there from the evening before can be a problem immediately in the morning, although we do have a maintenance crew that is there daily to not only open the park and close it at the end of the day, but in the morning when they're there, they're supposed to be cleaning up the park. So if that's not occurring, we will certainly make certain that that gets back onto their schedule, that not only do they unlock the gate, but they also make certain that the park has been cleaned and otherwise free of debris so that the people who are using the park can use it in an enjoyable way. I noticed the same thing on the weekday mornings as well as the weekend mornings. The individuals that use the park seem to be more professional and more responsive related to the care of the park, and it is in the afternoon and evening hours when the individuals who use the park tend to be more disrespectful. Unfortunately, I don't know that there's anything we can do in relation to adjusting the hours unless you just limit it to the morning hours when the individuals who are more respectful of the park participate, but I, I don't know that that would necessarily be fair to the community. But for the most part, the city's maintenance crew does take a very active and responsible role in maintaining the park, and city staff is very active in responding to any effort at vandalism by the users of the park to shut it down for several days and send that message. So I, we certainly will continue that practice, but I will also make certain that the individual who opens the park in the morning is more responsive to making certain that the debris has been removed from the parks, so those individuals who use it during those times will not have to worry about cleaning it themselves.
Thank you, and, you know, feel free if you see anything, take pictures, and you can either, I don't know if you're on Facebook or not, or if you're on email, we all have email addresses, you can send it to me directly too, and City Manager Star, and we will look into it and respond to it.
Hey, I do have to say that closing the skate park entirely for the full day or for several days, it's not just impacting those individuals that are vandalizing, it impacts the whole community.
Understand, and the reason why that we do that is so that the individuals get the message and they start self policing. So in other words, we can't, under state law, we are prohibited from monitoring the park. The moment that we start monitoring the park, then the city assumes all liability. So if a person who is using the park at their own risk injures themselves and the city is monitoring it, then we are responsible for their medical treatment, we're responsible for any litigation that they may file against the city and any claims that a jury would otherwise award. So we're prohibited by state law from monitoring the park unless we want to assume all those liabilities. So the way that we handle it now is that when we observe the vandalism or other forms of mistreatment to the park, we shut it down, and the reason we shut it down, again, is to send the message to the users of the park that we will continue to shut the park down for lengthier periods of time. You need to send the message to the users that they need to self police, and they need to get the message out that the City of Montclair is serious about individual responsibility related to use of the park.
Right. Thank you. Again, feel free to notify us if you see, if you see anything out there. Thank you. All right, so we're going to move on to the next items on the agenda, which these are, we have two public hearing items. Is everybody here, or Councilmember Lopez stepped out for a second? We can wait for him a little bit when he comes back in for public hearing items. So we'll take a little break. Councilman Lopez, so we're, we're in a break. Okay, we're going to call the meeting back to order, the city council, and we'll begin the, the public hearing items. The first item for consideration is adoption of ordinance number 24-1007. This is regarding to amending the municipal code relating to urban lot splits in two-unit projects. Obviously, this is a second reading, we had a first meeting, the last meeting, we had a full presentation by staff, councilors asked questions. I'm going to open this up for any additional public hearing items from the public. I don't see any members of the public wish to speak on this item, so I'm going to close the public hearing this item, and I'm going to ask the council if they have any questions. If not, can we get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion for ordinance number 24-1007 as presented this evening to be read by title and number only. Second?
Moved by Councilmember Ru, seconded by Councilmember Lopez, and can we have electronic vote? That is, that item is adopted five zero. Can I have the city clerk to please read it?
Ordinance number 24-1007, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Montclair amending Chapter 11.02 of the Montclair Municipal Code and adding a new Chapter 11.21 and a new Chapter 11.87 relating to urban lot splits in two-unit projects and determining the ordinance to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you. The next, the second public hearing item is considered adoption ordinance number 24-1008. This relates to the compensation schedule for the mayor and members of the city council. Again, I'll open this item for public hearing. Again, we got a presentation at the last meeting, members of the council commented or asked questions. Nobody in the public wishes to speak. We have a member of the public will speak?
I have a written comment.
Oh, go ahead. We'll take the written comment then.
Yes, this was submitted by Carolyn Raft. "Our residents don't realize how little council makes every month, nor do they know that the council not only have council meetings, budget meetings, subcommittees they are assigned to, which some are out of our city, they also help solve, if possible, resident complaints. They deserve completely what little they do get plus more. Unfortunately, Montclair is small, so they are not allowed large sums like our surrounding cities."
All right, thank you. So no further public comments, public comments are now closed. Again, I know the vote was, I believe was 311 at the last meeting. Councilmember Ru voted, I believe, voted no. Councilmember Lopez voted abstaining, not sure if they want to reiterate their, their reasons for their vote, or we can go ahead and make a motion right now and take a vote.
Just, just for the record, I had locked myself into a position four years ago during the campaign, and I want to adhere to that promise and pledge, I will be abstaining from a council salary increase.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll move for approval, oh, Councilmember Ru.
I, I just wanted to, I can wait till after I vote.
Okay, so I'll just go with Councilmember, I believe Council, Mayor Protim Johnson is making a motion, if I'm correct, and I believe Councilmember Martinez is going to second the motion.
I'll second, yes.
And with that case, let's do electronic vote. And that vote is adopted 311 with Councilmember Ru, no, Councilmember Lopez abstaining. And Councilmember Ru, Councilmember Ru, you see, you want to make a comment?
Yes, I wanted to say I did not take the last council increase, and I won't, will not be taking this one. I will ask the city manager to make certain that my pay remains as it is now. It's a philosophical issue with me that I just do not believe I need it at this point. I am far from rich, but to me, this is public service, and when so many of our residents are struggling right now, even this little bit, I think symbolically says that I'm with them. I don't believe, as may have been asserted in the last packet, that a couple of hundred dollars a month will make a difference between a low-income person running or not running. That won't make a difference to them. It certainly didn't with me. But everybody's entitled to their opinion, to do what they believe is right, and so for me, I just believe the right thing is not to take it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and again, I'll go into effect in January, January, I think, right after, December of next, this, December of this year goes into effect.
January.
January goes into effect, thank you.
And I'll go ahead and read by number and title.
Go for it.
Ordinance number 24-1008, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Montclair amending sections 2.12.050 and 2.12.060 of Chapter 2.12 of the Montclair Municipal Code related to the compensation schedule for members of the city council.
Right. Okay, now we're consenting calendar, obviously, we have already approved item B nine, so anybody on my right want to move an item off the consent calendar? No? How about my left? No, nobody? Can I get a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll make, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the consent calendar be adopted with the remaining items as presented.
I'll second. Okay, moved by Councilmember Lopez, seconded by Mayor Protim Johnson, and we'll do electronic vote, please. That's adopted five zero. We do have a council workshop proposed for our April one, city council meeting at 5:45. Any objections to the, to the workshop? If not, that's so approved. We now have communication, I have human res, human services department for, for updates, or upcoming events.
Good evening, city council, city staff, and members of the public. Please join us for Easter extravaganza on Saturday, March 30th, 2024, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. in Alma Hoffman Park and the Montclair Community Center. Please bring your own bag or basket to collect candy-filled eggs at a variety of Easter-themed game while supplies last. Children ages 12 and under are eligible for prize eggs and an opportunity drawing for a large Easter basket. In addition, there will be photos with the Easter bunny for $3 per photo or $1 using your own camera. The Ontario Montclair Kiwanis Club is sponsoring a pancake breakfast for $5, which includes two pancakes, sausages, and a juice while supplies last. Additional sponsors include the Women's Club of Montclair, Montclair Police Officers Association, and the Montclair Firefighters Association. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next, the city attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have the one item as indicated on the agenda, and that's for the council to meet in closed session regarding the appeal hearing of John Menook.
Perfect, then. And then, city manager star?
No items.
All right. I just want to recognize during the month of March, first of all, it is Women's History Month, and I'd like to recognize all the Montclair women, along with all the women in our region, for all the great hard work they do for, not their families, but for their children and their work community and elsewhere. I also like to recognize, especially after yesterday, the Irish-American, as a, as Irish-American Heritage Month, month, and hopefully, everybody had a good day yesterday and this past weekend, celebrating St. Patrick's Day, including my wife, who's Irish. And then at the end of the month, we will celebrate Caesar Chavez Day in memory of the, the late, great labor union leader. And then finally, I just want to state that most, I think, most of us attended the Little League, Montclair Little League opening they had two Saturdays ago, and it was a great event. So I will begin with Councilmember Martinez.
I do not have anything tonight, thank you.
Great, Councilmember Johnson.
Mr. Mayor, I have two quick items. One, I want to talk about the City of Montclair Shop Logo Program, which is going great guns, and for those of you who don't know what it is, it is that if you shop anywhere in Montclair and you take a picture of your receipt and send it to the Montclair Chamber of Commerce at events@montclerchamber.com, you can be entered into a $75 raffle that we do quarterly. The first raffle is going to be the end of next week, so if you- So if you've got receipts, send them to us so that you can be in the raffle. You too can win $75. So, and we're going to be doing that all year long. And the purpose for that is the city of Montclair and the Montclair Chamber of Commerce are working in partnership to make sure that people continue to shop here in our local city instead of going outside of our city. So get those receipts in so that you can be a winner. And the second item I have to talk about is the Cinderella Dreams program that occurred this Saturday past. There, it happened at the Montclair Place in the Old Nordstrom space. And there were about, I think there was, I heard there was 450 gowns that were available for the 190 girls that were going to come. These are low income girls who, without that assistance, could not go to the prom because they can't afford to spend hundreds, their families can't afford to spend hundreds of dollars. And those girls came in there and transformed themselves. They came in their jeans and their hoodies and T-shirts. And by the time they got their dresses with the shoes and the jewelry and then they got their makeup done, they really did look like Cinderella princesses. I was so delighted to be able to participate with them, to help them shop, to wait for them endlessly where they had to pick dress to try on, the seventh dress and the eighth dress and the 12th dress until they found the right dress. And all of them left there as princesses. So it was my honor to be able to work with them, work with those girls and their families to help them find all of the perfect things that they needed for prom. And I would encourage anybody who's interested. We, both the Cinderella Dreams team and the Montclair, the Seroprimis of Montclair Island Valley accept gowns all year long. So if you have something in your closet that you just can't squeeze into anymore or you've already been seen in that and you can't be seen in the same gown again, please feel free to donate them to us and we will be doing Cinderella Dreams again next year. It's an annual event. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
I can talk about the event in May? The chamber's doing it in May?
Oh, yes, there is. I have been talking about it. I need to talk about it some more. We are very proud of our city of Montclair Police Department and we will be honoring them on Thursday, May the 23rd at the Canyon and it will be one fantastic event. If you would like to register, please contact the Montclair Chamber of Commerce via email at exec@montclairechamber or you can call us at 909-985-5104. We're going to have a blast.
Okay, Councilman Lopez.
Thank you, sir. As the mayor alluded to, on March 9, Montclair Little League had their opening ceremonies. It was very good to catch up with parents I hadn't seen in about a year, maybe give or take a few months, to see some of these kids that I had coached four years ago, five years ago. Now, gosh, four or five years, three years older, continuing their passion for baseball. Some of these young women, I found out, that happened to be there to support their brother have now play, are now playing in Golden Girls. So it was awesome to see that investment you make into the lives of little ones is being continued and carried on. So it was great to be there and catch up with parents and neighbors and old friends. On Saturday, I believe it was Saturday, the 16th, yes. I attended the Buena Vista and Vernon Arts Conservatory program, their theater program. And they put on a play called Willy Wonka Jr. and it was held here at Vernon Middle School. It was their last performance on the 16th. They had about six of them earlier in the week. And these are students and young kids from grades first to eighth grade. And many of the little ones happened to be Oompa Loompas during the play and they were in their shiny silver overall, suspender type clothing, pants and their bright colored neon shirts, different colors for all of them. But it was great to see all those kids partake in a play and do the very best that they could and do a mighty, mighty good job. I will say, I forgot the program from the play. I was going to bring it. The young eighth grader who played Willy Wonka, if that kid keeps it up, I can see him in Hollywood someday. He's a natural pro for it. He's not shy, ashamed, afraid. He's very personable. I think he was even still in character as he was shaking hands throughout the crowd. I want to thank staff. Ed, thank you. In response to requests on the map for all of our alley completions. So thanks, Public Works. Thanks, city manager for the map. And just so the public knows, there has been, one, two, three, four, four allocations of funding for alleyways that have been completed in the city of Montclair from 2010, 2017, 2018 and 2022. Alley's have been addressed and done in the city. And of course, this year, we have, I believe, one, two, three, three or four more sections of the town that will be addressed. So thank you for that. Residents have been asking me, one, when is my area going to be done? And two, what all has been done? So this is helpful. I appreciate it. And then also, Mr. City Manager, I know you sent me an email regarding some inquiries I had in a sit down meeting we had last week. I haven't read the entirety of the email, but I know you gave me some concrete answers. I will review it and I may offer some follow up. May I just ask though, I believe it was one speaker, and I believe they're correct. We're into the third month of the year, going into the fourth shortly. What is the status on presenting to council a marijuana ordinance or proposal?
While we continue to work on it, we've hired a consultant who is going to assist us in drafting a new ordinance that will be related to the cannabis program in city of Montclair. I do have to say, it's not our top priority, but it is on our list of the many things that we're working on.
And then correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it was also the first quarter of this year, we were going to get some sort of presentation on housing issues?
We are currently working on the presentation for the city council related to that. It will be in the vein of all of the grants that the city has out and are awaiting responses on related to both affordable housing and homeless issues. There are a number of programs that we are looking at as well as other improvements within the community related to dealing with these various issues.
Any anticipation when that presentation might be slated for?
I would say that it would be before the end of the current calendar year.
Okay.
I'm sorry, the current fiscal year.
Okay, so by June 30?
My expectation is yes.
Okay, thank you for that. And then finally, hopefully everyone has adapted to the time change. I don't think I quite have yet, losing an hour. But hopefully, everyone is adapting. But I will reiterate once again, we're going to be getting some more daylight. So hopefully, people will pay attention to street signs and streetlights and slow down and we can minimize the accidents and the property damage done here in the city. But other than that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I know the Florida president has been very busy and the police department with accidents here the last few weeks. But Councilmember Rue.
Yes, they mentioned some events that happened on March 16. I was able to attend many of them. I had a professional commitment. Quite often with my job, I do have Saturday commitments and so it makes it a little more difficult to get there. But the city was well represented. Yesterday was St. Patrick's Day. You can see we have the green in here. So that was very nice. Tomorrow is St. Joseph's Day and historically, it's the day that the swallows return to San Juan Capistrano. If you've never seen that, I would encourage you to do so. Tomorrow is also the Persian New Year. And one of my Persian friends told me it's Salehno Mu Barak. So if I messed it up, I messed it up, but that's Happy New Year in Persian. The 31st is Easter. We wish everybody a wonderful Easter. As we've already mentioned, the 30th is Easter Fun Day. Please show up, whether you're young, young at heart, or just somebody who wants to enjoy the season. Please show up. It's always a great event. And that's all I'll have for right now. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. So at this time, we have committee meeting minutes on the agenda and we will now go into a closed session. Thank you.